Take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening. The September 25th, 2018 meeting of Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a line green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
At this time, I'd like for us to remember Margay Ski, a North Marion Middle School student who lost her life on September 23rd, 2008, exactly ten years ago tonight. Like tonight, that night was a school board meeting, and Margay was on the bus that was stopped with red flashing lights and crossing bars in place when a distracted driver slammed into the back end of her bus. The bus driver and twenty other students on the bus escaped, many thanks to nearby residents who heard the crash and ran to the scene. Margay did not escape. So tonight, I'd like to honor her memory with a moment of silence. As the first and only victim of a deadly bus crash in Marion County, we pray this horrible tragedy never plays out again. Ten years later, may we all continue to concentrate on driving when we're behind the wheel, not being distracted by cell phones and other items in our vehicles. So at this time, we will honor Margay with a moment of silence. Ms. Rose Cohen, Director of Equity and Assurance, please introduce the individuals who will be providing inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. It is my honor, Madam Chair, Board Members, Attorney Gibbs, Superintendent, and Madam Secretary, thank you very much. I have with me tonight members from our Racial Harmony Task Force, who will go over a lot of wonderful and upcoming things that will be taking place. I'm now going to give you a short inspiration, and then our pledge will be led by Mr. Jeff Engelhardt, who's our community, who's the Community Special Events Manager for the City of Ocala. That will be followed by Mr. John Spencer, who is the Recreation Division Head. And we have our three little people here. You would just stand on the wall. You would just stand. Yes. And we'll tell you why they're here in just a second, okay? So, I'm gonna read from one of my favorite books, and it is an excerpt from Rick Warren's, I know everybody's read this, "The Purpose Driven Life." This is such a powerful inspirational book, and I'd like to just share an excerpt from it. And this is entitled "Time." Time is your most precious gift because you only have a set amount of it. You can make more money, but you can't make more time. You, when you give someone your time, you're giving them a part of your life, and that's a part of your life that you can never, ever get back. Your time is your life. That is why the greatest gift you and I can give to anyone is time. And that's why we are here at the Marion County Public School System, because every day of our lives, even when we're not in our assigned positions, we are giving to the children of this county. We're giving them parts of our life. Thank you.
Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, School Board. Like Row said, my name is John Spencer. I'm with Ocala Recreation and Parks, and part of my role is serving on the Racial Harmony and Cultural Awareness Task Force. This summer, like we did last summer, we issued a poster contest to look at the overall theme of trust. The Racial Harmony Task Force is looking at ways to engage the community, both adults and young children, in cultural awareness activities, and the poster contest is one, just one venue that we talk, that we use to do that. So the poster contest was distributed through summer camps throughout the city and distributed throughout the school district as an opportunity for children and youth to draw a poster looking at the theme of trust. Some of the questions we provided, which were open-ended, and the canvas, which is open-ended, so they could draw whatever they would like to draw, is what does trust mean to you? Who do you trust and why? And how do you know if you can trust somebody? So we issued the contest. We had lots of entries of various ages through the, from the camps in the school district, and we, as the committee, chose three winners and three category winners. Before I go over those, we will announce an overall winner for the entire contest at the October 9th Racial Harmony Breakfast, Unity Breakfast. So our winners at the elementary level is Lauren Lemstrom, which is the first one on your left, and we can pass those out if anyone in the audience wants those. Lauren, did she make it?
No.
Middle school winner is Reagan Frye, which is the middle one.
Reagan.
Reagan? Oh, hi Reagan. We'll get your picture later. And then we had a collaborative category, because last year we realized that some people like to work together, work as a team. So we had a category for groups or teams of people, and we have, that is the Trust Your Heart, which is on the far right of the paper we provided. Jakarius?
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, I put your name. Julius? Oh, go ahead. I don't know if they can see you. So go ahead and wave, wave the board. So there are winners. Like I said, these are just three of the wonderful posters. Our committee had a, we had to make some tough decisions, but these three, we think, illustrate what it means to trust, and what we're gonna do, like I mentioned at the breakfast, is choose the overall winner. So one of these folks will be the overall winner, and we'll announce that at our breakfast next month. So thank you for allowing us to participate in the contest, and prevent that to the school district, and thank you for the participants who, who made their entries, so.
Thank you. And if the children will come up here so we can get your picture and say congratulations to you?
You guys could take one of those with you. So you want them facing out?
I'm gonna turn around so Mr. Christian can get your picture. Turn that way.
Turn around this way.
Yes.
Hold that for me, young man. Hold that for me. I think you guys should take three steps this way. One, two, three. All right, moms and dads, this is your chance. Here we go. You drop that side of your poster just a little, there you go, just like that. Everybody good?
Congratulations. These are absolutely beautiful, very, very good.
I'm so proud of you, you know that. Good to see y'all, okay? Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, boys and girls. Good job.
Thank you so much.
Very good job.
And thank you for being such polite, respectful, standing quiet. When I see children your age and you're so, you're just so together and calm, it makes this old lady really appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You don't see that all the time.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good job.
Very good. Don't forget, the winner will be announced at our breakfast, and speaking of the Unity Breakfast, hopefully everyone has RSVP'd and assured us that you would be there. We will have a phenomenal speaker this year, October the 9th, at the Klein Center at the College at CF, and the venue has changed to that location. We will have a hot buffet breakfast this time. After a number of years, we moved it to the Klein Center, so I think you're gonna be very, very pleased. October the 9th at 7:45. And while I'm at the podium, the Honorable Mary Sue Rich sends her regards. She felt very strongly that she would be here, and of course, they had to shuffle a lot of their budget meetings around, which prohibited her from making this meeting. So she does send her regards. And Jeff is going to talk to you a little bit about some of our upcoming events with the Racial Harmony Task.
Hello. My name is Jeff Engelhardt. I'm the Community Special Events Manager, and after seeing those little kids, I just have a urge to follow the Yellow Brick Road. But the first thing I wanted to talk about is the, we have a movie at Citizen Circle. We have a series called "After Dark in the Park," where we show movies. In each October, it's a, we focus on a movie that has a, like a cultural theme to it, and this year, it's gonna be "The Pursuit of Happiness." So I don't know if everybody's seen that. It's a wonderful movie. It's a true movie, which makes it even better. It's not, it's not made up. That'll be October 5th at Citizen Circle at 8:00 P.M. There's a Ocala Electric Utilities Customer Appreciation Day earlier on in the evening, and then we start the movie at eight o'clock. So I'd just like to invite you all to come to that if you're looking for a great movie and looking for something to do. We do have a Reach Across the Table event in February. The date hasn't been set, but last year, we had it at Silver Springs, the park, and it was a discussion of trust in the community, and we had a guest speaker, and it was a great event. We don't have the dates yet, but we have the reach, ocalamarion.org, there's a website you can go to and get the date, and we can make sure that you're aware of it, but we'd like to invite you all to come to that as well. And sometime in the spring, we have a Kids Involved in Diversity Social. What we used to do is in October, we did all of our events. We did the movie, we did the Kids Involved in Diversity Social, we did the breakfast, we did a couple other things, the Cultural Festival, but we decided to split them this year and spread it out. So instead of everything being in one month, that there'd be something in the fall and something in the spring, so that's why we're moving things around. Again, we don't have the date yet for the Kids Involved in Diversity Social. It'll be held at the Ed Kroski Center, I'm sure, because it's traditionally been held there in the past. So, but we'll be putting that information out as we go. And last, I'd like to invite you all to join or come to a meeting for the Racial Harmony Task Force. We meet the third Wednesday of every month at the Recreation Parks Administration Building, which is at 828 Northeast 8th Avenue. We're right across from the big blue water tower, and it goes from 10 o'clock till 11, unless we get a little verbose, and then it goes to 11:30-ish, but 10 to 11 is the scheduled time. The committee's been meeting for about fifteen years. It was started by Ms. Rich, and we invite people to come, we'd like to have new faces come and see if they feel like they want to become permanent members, but do drop by, at least for one meeting, and see if you feel that there's something there that speaks to you and that you can become a part of. So that's, that's all that I have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 25th, 2018 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
We have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation.
Hm.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 24th, 2018 School Board Minutes?
Still moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 31st, 2018 Special School Board Meeting?
Still move.
Moved by Mr. James. Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. I'm going to leave my seat for a few minutes. At this time, I would like to call to the front Kevin Shealy, President and CEO of the CEP. Just gonna have you guys come line up right here. Dean Blinkhorde, Director of Talent and Talent Development with the CEP, and the CEP is the Chamber Economic Partnership, for those of you that do not know. Will Tames, who is the Chairman of the Board of the CEP, Jennifer Hatchett, and Catherine This evening, I thought it was very important to publicly thank a group of people who worked incredibly hard to help us pass seventy-two percent the school one mil tax referendum. This was certainly a group effort. I want to thank Jennifer Hatchett, who chaired the referendum committee, and it was a big task, and another big task was Catherine Geiton, who served as the Treasurer for the referendum committee. I really think that what took it to the top was when our CEP made the decision to join us. The Board of Directors, under Will's leadership, unanimously voted to endorse the referendum for our community, and I wanted to publicly say thank you to all of them. It has never happened in our community before that a referendum has passed at seventy-two, almost seventy-three percent. It tells us that our community does believe in the education of our children, and does believe how important a well-rounded education that includes everything, the arts, P.E., career technical, media services, everything that makes a well-rounded student, they said yes to. So I want to personally thank them with plaque. And our plaques read, "For chairing," well, I won't read the whole thing, but this is, "Their efforts for helping make our referendum come absolutely to fruition for another four years." Will you please join me in a round of applause? Stay there, because we have one more goodie. I'm gonna ask Ms. Judy Zanetti to please join them up here. The CEP, through their political committee, not only promoted this, but they also raised funds for us, and because of that, we were able to do so many things. We raised funds through the referendum, but the CEP actually, through their political committee, raised, I wanna say, we raised close to $20,000. Through the referendum fund, because of their generosity and, and the referendum campaign, the campaign itself was able to use our dollars for social media, for billboards, but we were actually, because the CEP put their money into it, we actually had some funds left over. So, we wanted to give those funds to our Public Education Foundation for all the programs that they do. So Ms. Zanetti, on behalf of the referendum committee, we want to present you with a $5,098 check. Again, this referendum would never have been possible had it not been for the leadership of these people. Thank you all. I'm gonna call Ms. Judy Zanetti back up. Would like to recognize Rainey's Inc. as a business partner for Vanguard High School.
Thank you, Mrs. McCall. What a great night to be here at the school board meeting. I'm so excited. With me this evening, we have Joel Rainey from Rainey's, of course, and the Principal of Vanguard High School, Chris Carlisle. And so, Principal Carlisle actually made this connection and found a business partner for Vanguard when they had lost their partner earlier in this school year, so we're excited that he was able to reach out. And he not only found a great business partner, but he found an alumni of Vanguard High School to partner with, with their school. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Carlisle to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Chris Carlisle. I'm very proud to be the principal of Vanguard High School. One of the first things I knew that I needed to do this summer when I got on campus was to find a business partner, and a business partner that would engage with our students and provide them with opportunities off-campus. And the first person I thought of was Joel Rainey at Rainey's Inc., and when I, when I contacted Joel, he jumped at the opportunity. So we are, we are very, very excited for this, this partnership. I think we're gonna do some great things. I've been to their facility. It's, it's one of the most innovative company facilities I've ever been to, and I'm, I'm looking forward to see what, what we can do with our students with this partnership. So would that, like to introduce Joel Rainey, CEO of Rainey's Inc.
Hello, everybody. This is our first time being a business partner with any high school, so very excited about it. When Chris reached out, I was, I was very thankful. It's a, a perfect fit, as, as he said, I graduated in 2005 from Vanguard, so I think it's awesome. I get to work with the students again, work with Vanguard again. I know high school's a big part of everybody's lives, and it influenced mine for sure, so to have a chance to give back and contribute, I'm thankful for that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, and I have certificates for each of you to take back, but I've only unboxed one. Mr. Christian's not gonna like that for his picture. Mr. Christian, can he, they'll share the certificate for you.
Yeah, there, Mrs. Zanetti.
Thank you. And, so here you go, Joel. And there's your box.
Very much.
Carlisle. So I just wanted to say how exciting it is when we have alumni of Marion County Public Schools come back and, and be full circle with us. So Joel joins a growing list of business partners and sponsors for our programs that are graduates of Marion County Public Schools. So it's fantastic to see them still local and giving back, and what a great opportunity for Vanguard High Schools. Thank you all.
Thank you. And Ms. Zanetti, how many business partners do we still need?
Let's see, I believe we still need six business partners.
And if somebody out there is an alum or interested business, what should they do?
All they need to do is contact the Public Education Foundation, and we would be glad to connect you with this school. We're happy to do that, and we'll have more recognitions coming to school board meetings very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ms. Tia Brown, Program Specialist for Secondary Science. Ms. Christine Stickler, Program Specialist for Secondary Mathematics. Mr. Michael Colen, Program Specialist for Elementary Science. And Mr. Rafael Para, Representative, Representative from the STEM Alliance. Will you please come forward to recognize the individuals for the STEM Alliance Teacher and Scholar Awards?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Mayor. STEM Alliance is a nonprofit partnership of educational institutions that recognizes, supports, and fosters outstanding teaching and learning in science and math. Schools nominate an outstanding math and an outstanding science teacher. Seventh-grade students are nominated by schools, and the students submit a STEM-related essay to be evaluated by a district committee. The scholars that maintain certain academic criteria become sustaining scholars until they graduate. Tonight, we are going to recognize their accomplishments. Rafael Para is the STEM Liaison for the STEM Alliance of Central Florida, and we will be presenting awards to our teachers and students this evening. First, we would like to recognize our teachers. For Most Outstanding in Mathematics, Robert Geisel from Lakewood High School. For Most Outstanding in Mathematics, Maria O'Manya, South Ocala Elementary. For Most Outstanding in Science, Joseph Landrum from North Marion Middle School. Most Outstanding in Science, Charlotte Hasty from Harborview Elementary. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Christine Strickler, Secondary Math Program Specialist, to recognize this year's STEM Scholars and past STEM Scholars.
Good evening. Our new STEM Alliance Scholars for this year are, for Most Outstanding in Mathematics, Macy Fronfelter from Bellevue Middle School.
Congratulations.
And Most Outstanding in Science, Vivek Sanderpatty from Howard Middle School.
Congratulations.
Our past STEM Alliance winners for Most Outstanding in Science are Hunter Hutchinson from Vanguard High School. Margaret Waddell from Forest High School. Our Most Outstanding in Mathematics are Ruchi Patel from Vanguard High School. Graham Cope from Vanguard High School. Cameron Martinez from North Marion High School. Madison Handley from North Marion High School. E. Sierra Aguirre from Westport High School. Sofia Lopez from Westport High School. Past STEM Alliance winners that were unable to join us this evening are, for Most Outstanding in Science, Tristan Pink from Vanguard High School. Anna Mitchell from Vanguard High School. Kiran Ball from Westport High School. And for Most Outstanding in Mathematics, Sarah McGinley from Forest High School. Danielle Moore from Forest High School. Logan Potter from Forest High School. We are so proud of our STEM Alliance winners, and let's give them a round of applause.
Just step forward, right behind your students. All right, moms and dads, go for it.
Are we good?
Turn around.
Turn around. Congratulations to all of you young people. Remarkable. We hope you will come back to Marion County to pursue your career, whatever that may be. So congratulations. Mr. James?
STEM has always been one of the key things in what we're doing in our schools. And by you guys showing your skills and working in this particular area is really a notch up for us as a district to have all of you guys before us today. It is really an honor to say congratulations to you, especially in this area. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I'd like to say one thing. Being a mom of three STEM kids, young adults, that their college degrees are in engineering, they still, to this day, talk about their STEM teachers, which it wasn't called STEM in those days. My children are 30, 32, and 37, through Forest High School and Osceola and Madison Street and South Ocala. But they still, I want you to know, you are what makes America great, the teachers and the students that follow your teachers and make them proud. That's what makes America great, and thank you.
Thank you all.
Before they leave, I was going to say that what stood out to me is, I want to tell everybody, congratulations, and it was my perfect view, but I saw the students in the middle, I saw this teacher standing behind them, and I saw the parents in front of them, and you guys were sandwiched right in the middle. And I was like, that's like the perfect combination of how education really should be, with the parents and the teachers all supporting you guys, and it was just perfect for me to see. So congratulations.
You missed the principal standing back there.
Oh, the principals, they're very important, too. Yes, they are. They are the icing on the cake.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you. Yeah, it was weird. I was like seeing it.
That's a great analogy.
I know. It just like stuck out. I'm like, they were standing, and you just saw the parent, this teacher's right behind them, you know, and then you saw the parents. The parents led their way.
That's what a teacher would see. I saw it, it was weird. It's cool. I see people. And you can break it down.
You broke it out.
Okay, Mr. Mark Vianello, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, will come forward to recognize Mr. Kevin Shealy, President and CEO of the CEP. Will you please come forward as well, and Mr. Blinkhorn, to recognize the individuals for our LEAD compliant programs and teachers as well. Also, the winner of the logo contest for the LEAD compliant program logo. But before you do that, I believe our superintendent has something to say.
Well, Mr. Vianello, it's like I just saw you, right? So today, everybody, Mr. Vianello was recognized with a statewide honor. Our local Career Source Agency, with our friends Rusty Skinner, Kathleen Woodring, and all of them, nominated Mr. Vianello for what's called the Community Partner Award. And this award is given to somebody who's a liaison with communities in each of the regions of Career Source, and we are Region 10. So this Region 10 application was submitted by Ms. Woodring, and today, Mr. Vianello was awarded that special honor. And it was at a beautiful luncheon in Orlando for the statewide Career Source recognition, it's an annual conference, annual conference that they have, and so he received that. Prior to him being awarded it, the Chancellor of Vocational was there from the state, who sat there and, well, he stood there, and gave a speech about how things should be with vocational programs in our schools. And I just kept looking at Mr. Vianello, you do that, we do that, you started that, we're still, we're doing that. And then it was the time for the award to be presented, and when you were presented the award, it was like I sat, and it kept going on, and he kept listing everything that we're doing under your vision, and I could not have been prouder to be there today. And do you have the award with you? Could you show it?
Well, I do. As a matter of fact.
And would you, would you, just a few words?
Well, it was, it was an honor, and there are 24 Career Source Boards around the state, and Career Source, their mission is workforce development, and ours, it's a wonderful organization statewide, and we have a terrific organization here in Region 10. So it was an honor, I was very humbled. It's a team effort, and with the CEP and Career Source and economic development and workforce development is a community issue that requires a community solution, and we have many, many organizations working together to help the Ocala-Marion County area. So it was quite an honor, it was a nice day.
Well deserved.
And so, well, thank you, Dr. Mayor, and I appreciate you being there. So let's talk a little bit about LEAD. LEAD stands for Linking Economics and Academic Development. And what we're trying to accomplish in CTE is to expand choice, to create relevance, but at the heart of what we're doing is to have quality CTE programs, and that is where LEAD comes into play. So LEAD is our common vision, it's the rubrics, it's the vocabulary that we use to determine what is a quality CTE program. So when I'm asked, Mark, do you have good programs? I can say yes, but I can back that up with data. It's not just an opinion that I'm giving or anyone else is giving. We have data to support that we do have quality programs. And so, I want to read real quickly some of what are embedded within our 13 standards. It includes linkage to economic and workforce development, program structure, we look at the curriculum, instructor certification, school-based operation teams, classroom, lab, and industry testing space, marketing, student enrollment, program sustainability, financial sustainability, and return on investment. So when we say that a program is LEAD compliant, we can all rest assured that it is the highest of quality of our CTE programs. And very proud to announce that we have four, our first four, programs that have met that standard. Remember, we said it's a two-year process, we are just starting our second year. And then in comes Kevin and the CEP once again, and Will and Dean. So what wonderful partners, just like Career Source, what wonderful partners in economic development, and they give so much of their time, but they also give part of their financial resources, and they stepped up and said that they're going to provide a $250 check. So I'm going to turn this over to Kevin to say for each of our programs. But I do want to brag a little bit more about the CEP. Last week, we saw an email that our state, again, our state recognized our CEP as the Chamber of the Year for the entire state of Florida.
Mr. James, I think you need to join these gentlemen up here.
Please. You beat me to it, so I appreciate that. Listen, I want to take just a moment, Madam Chair, School Board, Superintendent, thank you all for your partnership. And Mark just took all of my lines, so I can't use them now, but it really is about partnerships. And as we think about the great things going in our community today, whether it's about the growth of our community, new things happening, but what we're doing in education, where we're successful is where we can partner together. And I am so excited for the role we get to play, the chance to partner with Mark in particular, but everyone here at the school system, and what we see happening in career technical education, I think should make you all extremely excited. I think we have a chance to really do something unique and different, and we look at how businesses are getting engaged and how they're involved. We'll have to find some time to kind of walk through some of these things with you all, but it is extremely exciting to see these partnerships, and we appreciate that. And I want to back up to one thing, Madam Chair. You know, it was 73% on the school referendum. We round up in economic development. It was 73%, and 124 of 125 precincts. So I think you and I need to go to the one precinct in Denellen.
And find out what?
And find the eight people who voted no, the 13 people who voted in that precinct, and talk about why this was important. But thank you all for your partnership. We're excited to do this, some other great things coming down the line, where we're going to continue to partner with you all and partner as a business community, because this really does make our community better. So thank you all.
Okay, without further ado, I'd like to bring up our first four LEAD compliant teachers and the programs that they represent. If I could please have Ms. Kim McManus, EKG Technician Teacher at Forest High School. Mrs. Sean Digman, Arts and AV Teacher at Bellevue Middle School.
Kim, come up here.
Big checks. Chef Jason Benavides, Culinary Arts Teacher, Bellevue Middle School. And Dr. Gere, you must be doing something right, because you've got two of our programs LEAD compliant. Thank you for your leadership there. And Ms. Amy Davis, who is our Animal Science Technical Ag Operations Teacher at Bellevue High School. And so how about a round of applause for these four. But we're not done. So in order for us to memorialize these programs, we had to have a LEAD logo. So we asked our students, please come up with, here's what LEAD is about, please come up with the logo. And we had a young lady out of Mr. Engelhardt's class at Bellevue High School, and let's see, this is what the LEAD logo will look like, and we'll probably blow these up, and they will hang on our program teachers' walls, so as you walk in, it'll memorialize the year that they were LEAD compliant, so we hope to see year after year after year. But I'd like to introduce and bring up next, and so, a thank you to the CEP. So the teachers get $250. This student will receive a $100 check to use however she wants to, so please come up, Cheyenne Brady, Senior of Bellevue High. I do, yes.
Keep the artwork with you. Come on, you need to. Mr. Only one of these signs. You guys go right ahead, you're in position. Stay there.
Thank you all, congratulations.
If I could, Madam Chair, I would be remiss if I did not thank the presenting sponsor of our Talent Development Initiative, Townley Manufacturing, Underwrites, all of it we're doing in talent development, and so we appreciate all that they're doing to invest in the business community and in our schools. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Shealy. I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and provanity are strictly prohibited pursuant to the procedures for public comments. Item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy only, a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Madam Secretary, do we have anyone wishing to address the board? We have a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-09, a resolution of the School Board of Marion County, Florida, regarding school safety, Senate Bill 7026, Section 26 of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Safety Act, for the protection and safety of school personnel, property, students, and visitors. May I have a motion?
Move.
Moved?
Second.
By Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion on this resolution? I believe you have all seen it in your packets. Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the five-year District Facilities Work Program for fiscal years 2018, 2019, through 2022 and 2023?
Move. Second.
Ms. Boynton moved, Mr. James seconded. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board on the five-year work plan? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed like sign. May I have a motion to approve the Deductive Change Order Number 7, Amendment Number 2, in the amount of $12,817.20 to Colson Wright Construction for the new eight classrooms and art music suite additions at Wyamina Park Elementary School?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C10.1-C21.1?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion on consent? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Deductive Change Order Number 7, Amendment Number 2, in the amount of $12,817.20 to Colson Wright Construction for the new eight classrooms and art music suite additions at Wyamina Park Elementary School?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, opposed like sign. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Deductive Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 1, in the amount of $12,132.20 to DS Contracting LLC for the return unspent funds concerning demolition of principal's office at Lakewood Middle School?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please vote aye, opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. The next two items, Mr. Gibbs, is it okay if I do both of these change orders in one motion? Or do we have to do them in two?
In two.
Do we have to do them in two? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Deductive Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 1, in the amount of negative $3,618.18 to Ausley Construction, Inc., for the return unspent funds concerning gymnasium floor replacement at Osceola Middle School? It's $3,000 returned, sorry.
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, please vote aye, opposed like sign. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. The motion passed 5-0. The last one, may I have a motion to approve the proposed price of $814,863 from Allstate Construction, Inc., for the purchase fencing gates and associated security hardware as part of the district-wide project to construct fencing systems throughout the school system?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $30,130, $1,000 to Bellevue Santos Elementary from the Rotary Club of Bellevue, $2,500 to curriculum and instruction from Civil River Museum, $1,500 to curriculum and instruction from Civil River Museum, $15,130 to curriculum and instruction from the Felburn Foundation, $5,000 to Dr. NH Jones from an anonymous donor, $2,500 to 8th Street Elementary from their business partner Glover Law Firm, $2,500 to Howard Middle School from their business partner Siva M.D. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor of these donations, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Ms. Stacy, would you like to thank?
Certainly. How much did they total?
Thirty thousand...
$130. Thank you so much. I would like to thank the community for all they do. And we were thanking people from the CEP this evening for the work that they've done to acquire tremendous assistance to this school system, thanks to the taxpayers of Marion County. But I'd also like to thank Beth McCall for her work with the CEP and her organization of this effort. Her, the CEP, the people that give us donations to our school system, it's something that probably only happens in America, where we get this type of support from the community for our children that's outside of government, that is strictly done through individuals to help to further the education of our students. And I would like to thank this community for all they do.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 4th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss long-range planning, the annual Public Education Foundation report, review district-wide attendance zones, strategic plan update, present and discuss school choice, the plan and the timeline for Oakcrest, and the community reads update, Attorney Gibbs amended contract and salary. So board members probably need to plan a little bit past noon. I think it will probably go for a while. There's quite a bit on the agenda, okay? So if you'll just plan for that. Also, on October 10th, beginning at 9:30, we have an employee hearing. Also, October 17th, at 9:30, an employee hearing. So with that, I will now ask for comments and concerns from the board members. And Ms. Boynton, I'll start with you. None? Mr. James?
Oh, yeah. First of all, I just want to, Beth and I, I want to thank you again. I know Stacy did, but I know you did a outstanding job in representing us well in the many opportunities that you had to speak about, speak on this issue. I want to thank you for that. I want to say this to us, and I did have a chance to talk with the superintendent a little bit. I was over at Oakcrest at their meeting, and I came in and I saw what we were doing. But I also was talking with some of the people out there. And one of the things that I want to say, and so I'll lead into this, this is the information that we get on our turnaround schools. And they, the people that's working with our turnaround schools are doing a good job in terms of getting the information so we will know. One of the issues that I will say that we need to do is make sure that the people that are affected by this information is aware of this information. And how do we do that? If we have a work, I have a meeting like we had on Thursday, we have to have more people there. And you will say, well, everybody knew about it. My question was, was this a meeting for processing what we need to do in order to comply with the state? Or was it a meeting where we wanted to inform the community about these numbers? And how do we do that? We had, it looked in the paper, how many parents we had there? Kevin, seven? Five. Okay, and we could say that the parents are not interested. Guys, I will tell you this, and I don't know whether I explained it to the superintendent, but I told, I said to her, we need to have something that's draw people to this thing. When I say that to you, if we had a football game and you only had the football team out there, you're only going to have one or two parents of the football players that can get there. We spent a lot of time on a music program where we got a person down there that's coordinating music and all of that. I didn't see a band there. You notice that you have Chili's and you have a band there, and that draws the crowd. And when I say that to you, you have a concession stand over there, people can get something to eat and all of this. All I'm saying, are we going through the process, or do we really want these people to understand what we're doing and these numbers? Okay, and my wife told me not to say this, but I got to say it anyway. I don't know whether y'all know what a bum's rush is. A bum. You want to get him out the house. You come in, you say a few words to him, and then you rush him out. And I'm almost certain, if parents are as old as I am, they got the idea that everybody in that place had somewhere to go, and they just came and gave us a little, a little hard-to-do thing, and then gone out the door. Because it was over in 20 minutes. We only had five people. And in order for us to make sure that the people understand what's happening at our turnaround schools, we got to make a concerted effort. If you spend, if you put it on the agenda, and we got all these things connecting, and I must tell you right now, we have some things in place. We have a community development, a community person that's supposed to be helping with this. We got a music program where we can have music there. We got a culinary arts program where we can give a couple of hot dogs. And I'm almost certain that we will extend, our extended day program at that school, in which they had parents there at the schools, am I correct? There's a extended day down there, right?
Yes.
Okay, and those parents, if you say, hey, we're going to feed y'all tonight, but I want y'all to hear this thing, and there going to be some singing. All I'm saying is when I look at the school system, and when I look at the number of people that was in the STEM program, guys, I do not, I do not want the school system to be teaching the elite, and we're missing some of the other kids in this program. Because I'm looking at the minority kids that's there, are we hitting the elite? And for some reason, with the younger, the minorities and other kids that should be in those programs, we're missing those guys. And this is some of the things that I'm saying. See, I won't be around to tell you guys, you got to look at it from the other way, other side. Because I will guarantee you that the majority of those people, and this is some of the things, I'll give you one more. They said, we asked a question. I asked a question, and they said, well, you asked that question to somebody over there in the suit or whatever. I don't know whether that's true or not, but that's what they said. And this is what my concern is, that if we don't have these meetings, then we make a concerted effort to get the parents out there and not, and not just say, okay, I'm going through the process because this is required of us from the state. I want those people to be fully involved and vetted in this thing. And when we have to make some tough decision, they will be, they will have an opportunity to look at these numbers, and we will have, did what we need to do. That's what I saw the other day. Thank you.
Just the Ocala Housing Authority, the lady that was there, do you remember her name, Dr. Mayer? Anyway, I think she had a good idea. They have a community center, and maybe we could take some of this information to the community center where some of these folks are living, you know, and make it easier for them to get there. And I thought that was a good idea. But I don't disagree that maybe we ought to do something. But she said maybe we should bring it to them because transportation is an issue for many of their people. So I just, something we might want to think about is taking the show on the road and trying to get...
Okay, I will say that, I'll say this to you now. I understand the role of the Ocala Housing Authority. But if you look at the demographics of the Ocala Housing, that should be one portion of it.
Correct.
That should be one portion of it. But the second portion of it, it needs to be coming to this school. Because I'm convinced that there's people in there would have shown that we would have provided something like a meal out or whatever to get their attention and go down to that, go down to the after-school thing and say, hey, we haven't, we talking about the school up here. We'll keep your kids for now.
I can say, Mr. James, you know, when I talked to other the parents, you know, I asked them why, you know, I asked them questions, they say, well, if we had a little bit of food for them, you know, the parents would come. And because the first time, the same parents came, you know, because all of us, all of us there at the same time for Oakcrest and for that turnaround school. But I did, you could see me going, those parents asking why? Why not so many people not coming back? And another reason, they said, they all know about Earth, excuse me, Evergreen. And they said all that information had gotten to them already, and most of them were, like the little children said, one of the things they thought, well, maybe they were going to close it instantly already. And they were, I said, no, you know, we talked about it. But I think, like I said, the parents said, if we wanted other those parents to come over here, because that was a parent meeting, I said, maybe we can get the parents to come to our, come in our school and get some food, 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 something. But I know they gave them something, they gave them cookies and something to drink, and it was, yeah, and I thought it was really nice.
Well, and they did the survey, and they had, they had quite a few parents turn the survey back in. And actually, the majority, the percentage of the survey turned back in, I thought, was a higher number than most surveys. And they made it clear that their choice would be an external operator. So, you know, they did, they did get information, and they did do the surveys, and they had a 30-some-odd percent that sent the surveys back in, out of their population.
That's over 25%, 25% of them.
Yeah, it was 30 something. Anyway.
To me, that's an indication that the people are interested. And this is why we need to continue the education. If we had this information here, you giving it to us, give it to them and encourage them to get out there. It'd be so much easier.
And one other, oh, sorry. One other thing I did hear is the timing. I mean, if you have working parents, 5:30 is early. By the time you go, you might even still be at work. So we might even look at the timing of when it's taking place. And again, if it's a community meeting, I do think that the community should be able to ask questions. I also heard that they were not allowed to present their questions. And I think we probably need to reevaluate that also. You know, because if they don't, if they're being shut down, that they can't ask a question publicly, then that's not sending a good message either, if we're saying it's a community meeting.
And I'd also like to share my experience when I went the first time. And that's honestly why I didn't go the second time. When I went the first time, saw a lot of people there, a lot of administrative people, a lot of other people, but not a lot of parents. At the front of the room, there was a parent that was, she had her hands full. She had children at the front. There were like, I guess, beanbag chairs or something that the children were playing in. She was trying desperately to pay attention. I wasn't there, the meeting had barely started, 10 minutes, and I got up and went to the front, I sat on the floor, and asked her if I could help her. And she looked at me, and she said, I do want to hear this, and thank you so much. I never get a break. I took her children outside. I had them outside the entire meeting. I heard nothing. I have no clue what happened in there. But we walked the blue line, we walked the yellow line for...
They, Ms. Stacy, they did have childcare for the second meeting in a separate room.
But the parents need to know that they're going to, childcare is great, but sometimes those children get hungry, and they, you know, having the childcare and the hungry student, like the children that were talking, the little boy and girl that were talking, they kept saying, we want something to eat. I didn't have anything to give them to eat, and they kept telling me outside, they were hungry, they were hungry. And I believe if we put a package together, like Mr. James said, and we have really advertised daycare, and we have a meal so that the children can be fed and the parents, you know, after the end of the meeting, the children can be fed with their parents, I think it'll make a tremendous difference in the turnout. Because, I mean, that's how we always, that's always how we've gotten parents together. Because they have to go home, cook a meal for the children, and this way they wouldn't have to do that. It could just be all in a package. So...
If you feed them, they will come. That is true.
Well, I think we need to make sure that they are aware that we're trying to educate them about this process. And if they get a sandwich in between, that's a good thing.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that. Okay, are you through, Mr. James?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes. I really wasn't going to say a whole lot for a while, and I waited until the August primary was over. And I held my tongue kind of until that time was over. But I spent most of my life as a parent activist, term politician, and I just can't be muzzled just because I'm a political figure. I won't be muzzled and refuse to bring out things, issues that we're having, just because someone calls me a name, calls me uncivil. Puts me in good company because the founding fathers, who developed the most incredible document that the world has ever had, founded that document upon arguments and almost gunfights, spirited arguments, that today would be called, all of them would be called uncivil. So I appreciate those who call me uncivil for putting me into such great company. But I am the voice of the people. And the massive amount of politics that accompanies the elected superintendent position just opens doors for so many things, because no one is in, no one is really accountable for this school system. We have a dictator's ominous treatment of many of our employees in the most heinous form of harassment, which is through their family's livelihoods, as evidenced by the fact that longtime employees with great personnel evaluations for decades, they're bravely coming forward now to publicly address this board to their incomprehensible treatment. I have watched political administrative appointments versus qualified administrative appointments in both this administration and the last. However, no administration has ever ignored board policy and state statutes, as has this elected superintendent, for which the school board has no power to rein in because she is elected and not hired by them. I sadly call this sort of like our own Jim Comey FBI style of governing in this school district. Our board policy requiring principal certificates was totally ignored, with at least six of the superintendent's principal hires a year ago. And not until I demanded a list of all unqualified principals that I copied to our school board attorney, did this school board have any proof that a whole entire year earlier, our board policy had been completely ignored by this elected superintendent. And constituents wonder why test scores plummeted. After I exposed this school district's issue that we had with the not following board policy, the superintendent requested that we just rewrite our board policy, put it into the state's minimal principal requirements to widen the field of possible... the state's minimal principal requirements, to widen the field of possible hires that her administration could look to. Her administration told us that by widening this field, we could continue getting great hires like they had gotten the year before when they bypassed our board policy. At that time, we had no idea how detrimental their unqualified hires had truthfully been because no school scores were in yet from the Department of Education. Essentially, the superintendent's staff came before the board with their dog and pony show about how they believed our board policy was outdated, as it exceeded the state's minimal requirement for principal appointments. Well, I guess it kind of guilted the board into lowering the bar so we wouldn't have to demote her six appointments that she had hired, who did not meet the school board qualification. But they insisted they were top-notch hires. We were told how fabulous those principals were, you know, kind of like our kids do when they're caught. They ask their parents for forgiveness and blame the parents for making them disobey because they were just so strict on them. Kind of what this board member heard that day during that discussion. This school board fell for it and foolishly believed. The superintendent was truthful and we rewrote our policy, which I do not believe we would have done had the state's academic data come out first, to expose the line of baloney we had been fed. So what did the academic data show us a few weeks later? It showed us that of our eleven failing schools, which equated to thirty-six percent of our elementary schools, that shockingly, eighty percent of the superintendent's five unqualified elementary principal hires the year before, done behind the school board's back, made it on the list of three hundred lowest-performing elementary schools in the state. But one hundred percent of those five elementary principals, not meeting school board requirements, declined in performance at their elementary schools. I will note that, yes, of our thirty-one elementary schools, twenty-three percent of the qualified principals that were qualified per board policy with principal certificates did make the lowest three hundred list. But sadly, eighty percent of those principals that were unqualified per our board policy made that list. No appointed superintendent in the state had such heinous elementary school performance as we had. And if that had been a superintendent, if that had, if they had that superintendent, she would have immediately been fired by the school board. Instead, our school board has to sit back and watch two more years of this failure off the backs of our children. Over the past six years, under the elected superintendents, this district has plummeted academically at the fastest rate in the state and stolen our children's one opportunity at an education, including the right to be taught to read and do math. An entire Marion County generation of elementary students, six years of them, from kindergarten through fifth grade, not a single one of those five principals that did not meet state, that did not meet the original board policy qualification, had been demoted back to an AP to further train under a high-performing principal. Now to my final point. I must apologize for missing the board meeting last, two weeks ago, as I had a very ill mother. It was only the second Tuesday board meeting I had missed in six years. The first miss, I was in the emergency care center from a fall, two or three hours before the board meeting. And this time, it was my mother's hospitalization that pulled me away. I spoke to Mr. Gibbs on how to proceed with the following information regarding the strange firings and demotions and forced retirements within this district. I will discuss no names. I will name, I will name no one. I will name no administrators or anyone that is in this conversation that I'm about to have. Heidi Mayer has refused to tell this board why people were demoted, as I have asked, who have decades of great past evaluations. I have asked her why our employees were not recommended to return, and I even requested documentation months ago for each that were demoted. And I have yet to receive a single document. I purposely have waited to address this, as I said, until after the August primary. Given the fact, I do believe we will hear from others at future board meetings. The public I represent has the right to know what I know. After all, I am their voice, as this is a republic where elected officials represent their constituents. Our employees are hired and fired by the superintendent per statute, which that's fine. But I have pertinent information to share with board members that I have no other way, no other venue to share this information with you. What I'm about to share is an example of why this board may need to soon look into implementing the Good Cause Clause for not backing the superintendent's employment decisions and challenge future demotions. Otherwise, these ongoing personnel losses are simply going to bless surrounding districts that are much higher performing than we are, because they keep grabbing up our castoffs. Must not be much of a castoff if some of the highest performing districts in the state are grabbing them up. If they aren't good enough to work for this district ranked fifty-nine out of sixty-seven, then why are top-ranked, high-performing districts hiring them as fast as we fire them? Surrounding districts are now staffing their school with personnel trained in Marion County, and they obviously view them as some of the state's bestest and brightest teachers and administrators, because they're higher-ranked than we are. What I do know is that I received a request for assistance by an assistant principal back in June. They had been given a signed intent letter in February for her to return to her school as an AP, only to have it reversed three months later, with never a single reprimand to indicate her performance was anything but excellent from February to May. So let us review the facts of what happened. Six weeks from when this employee and her principal together signed an intent letter for her to return, six weeks after May, that May the twenty-eighth day, I believe it was, in April, the superintendent tweeted out in mere moments, her mere moments that she tweets, in April, praising our APs during Assistant Principal Week, with Superintendent Mayer highlighting three of the district's approximate, we probably, I don't know how many APs we had, maybe a hundred, however many we've got. At some schools, we have multiple ones. And this employee was one of those that was later determined not to re-up her term with us. It was one of the three that was highlighted, highlighted in April. So obviously, there didn't seem to be a problem with her employment if she made one of the top three on the superintendent's tweet in April. Six weeks later, the school principal reverses his reappointment of this AP. His letter states it was based upon, and I have all of this stuff, I can give you everybody copies of, I have all the documents here I'm speaking from, that it was based upon her lack of technical abilities that APCs needed, although it had never been mentioned before to her that this was a problem. Why? Because my research I will share next shows it probably didn't exist. So as an employee manager myself, I see several problems. I do know that our district administrators are involved with frequent principal meetings. I have to admit serious concerns as to why we have a principal who signed a reinstatement intent for an AP at the end of February, and six weeks later, he had obviously failed to communicate to this district, to his district supervisors at one of the many principal meetings, that he was not happy with the performance of his AP that at the same school he was at for two years before had received good evaluations from the principal at that time. He obviously hadn't told his superiors, because in Mayer's moments, six weeks before the last day of school, when she was basically fired, she would not have singled her out as a great AP, one of three out of a hundred. After hearing all of the above from our employee, I started my own investigation, which I completed in June. I contacted the district executive director, who could give me information. During our conversation, I referred to the May document regarding this AP's technical abilities as an AP, and that this, after speaking with her principal, she understood that to mean that she was not doing a good job at making student schedules through the Skyward computer system, although no one had ever told her that. That was the first news she had ever heard of that, was in May. The executive director explained to me that this employee just was not grasping the computer scheduling knack. I asked why she was not put back to an APD, since she was obviously good at that, as she was placed there two years in a row with good evaluations, and then the third year as an APC. She told me that the district preferred to never go backwards, not to let her go back to an APD, but that they preferred to put people all the way back, let them kind of start over, let her go back to, she was offered a dean status, to learn and reapply for the pool. But I inquired as to how would she ever perfect the scheduling fault she had, since this was something only APCs did. And it was kind of crickets for a moment on the phone. She went on to say also, that besides that, her previous principals, principal and current had other things to say besides just scheduling about her. Of course, she did not know that at the time, I was holding the previous two years of evaluation from the AP's previous principal, so her comment to me threw up serious red flags. Did her previous principal not tell the truth for two years on her previous evaluations? Or was someone being dishonest to me, were my thoughts on that day? So I had promptly turned around and I called the school site itself. I spoke to a person there who was probably the most familiar with scheduling at the school. And actually, she told me she did all the scheduling for the previous APC, because he never did any of his, she did it all. I felt she probably was simply a great employee, didn't know the politics of what was going on, didn't even know really anything. So I just asked her for an honest opinion. And she said, I'll give you my opinion. What do you want to ask me, Miss Stacy? I said, um, I said, the AP at your school, the APC at your school has not been re-enlisted to come back. I said, could it be because of her inability to do scheduling? And she said, oh, no, ma'am. No, there's no, there's no problem with her scheduling. I don't know why she wasn't invited back, but not because of that. And I said, so, how do you know? And she said, oh, our principal is so great that we got, that came to our school this year, he did all his own scheduling. There was no scheduling for her to even do, because the principal had already done all of it before she even got there, because he was very, very good at that. He came from a high school and he was very good at scheduling, and he just did all of his own and got it all done. And she said, so, no, there wasn't a problem because that APC, nor did I have to do it. And she said, and I had always done it in the past with the previous APC. So she said, except for the few people, the few students that needed schedules in the fall and that sort of thing, new students coming into the school, but the majority of the schedules were already made. Well, I did speak with the executive director about the fact that I did know that the APC at the school, since she was a new APC, had been offered the Skyward course on scheduling to really get a handle on, because she had never done it before. She was an APC for the first time, and she would have to do some scheduling the second semester, so she took the Skyward course. But I was told she just didn't really grasp it. So I asked this nice employee about that Skyward class. She goes, yeah, I went and took it also. We both, we both went to it and to learn the new things on the schedule, whatever was new with Skyward. We both, we both went to it. And I said, so, did you ever hear that possibly the AP didn't grasp the scheduling? And she said, no, she did fine. She did fine. She, after we went through Skyward, she did almost all of it. I said, oh. And she said, well, she did all of it until testing began, and then she had to be the school's testing coordinator, because that's also what she had to do. I said, so then she didn't do all the scheduling? And the sweet girl got kind of defensive. And she goes, well, she couldn't do it all. She couldn't do schedules and testing coordinating. Miss Stacy, that's a lot of work. So she said, once she started as the testing coordinator, then I picked up the scheduling and finished it out, while she did the, was a testing coordinator. I said, at any time at this school, did you ever hear anyone say that this principal, this assistant principal had a deficit in scheduling? She goes, no, ma'am. And this was her first year, and she, I think she did very well for her first year. I said, okay. Well, since this story didn't really add up, a lot, so many pieces of this story didn't add up, out of just pure curiosity, I asked that AP, you know, I'm not finding anything that's lining up, you've never been reprimanded, this story about this technical stuff's not washing with the people at the school, let me ask you something. Have you ever told anyone that you might consider running for school superintendent? She goes, yes, I did, at a meeting in March. I was being interviewed in the principal pool about the possibility of becoming a principal and getting into that pool. And I applied, and there were people on the interview committee, and I was asked, what were my aspirations? What did I look for? She said, I look forward to becoming a principal and someday being school superintendent. So I thought that was interesting, because two months after that meeting, she was fired. My conclusion, I must let the other individual board members decide for themselves why things happened as they did. I can only tell you the facts as I lived them. I will take a lie detector regarding the facts I presented, and I too speak these truths with God as my witness. Dr. Condoleezza Rice stated at a national political convention that our next civil rights battle will be fought in our public schools. I do believe she meant the final battle for full equality for all people, all children of all colors, was soon to be waged when she made that public statement. My opinion, it is going to take women with the likes of Margaret Thatcher, Dr. Marie Montessori, and Rosa Parks to turn just Marion County around. I don't know who our Margaret Thatcher will be, or who our Maria Montessori will be, maybe Kelly King. But I do believe the people of this district met Marion County's Rosa Parks two weeks ago tonight. Thank you.
Ms. King?
Well, Beth, today's your birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And I also want to tell you, thank you so much for leading our community with, and I didn't have a chance to say it earlier, when Kevin and Mark and you were down there. But there's a saying that says that when you're a leader and you turn around and no one's behind you, you're simply taking a walk. But you simply did not take a walk. You encouraged a whole county to follow you and vote that referendum. And so I just, I'm appreciative of that and just want to tell you that. Thank you. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but I am hearing some concerns through the community about class size. I would like some information on how we're doing with that, if we're following the law and making sure that we're staying within the guidelines of our classroom sizes, because I'm hearing a lot about that. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you all for your support for the referendum, because it really made a difference. I have scheduled with John Curley several of my learning walks for my... several of my learning walks for my school. I start them in October. So I think it would be a great way for all of us, as I discussed at the last board meeting, to really see what's going on in our schools. And so I encourage you with your area coordinator to maybe schedule some of those learning walks. And I'm excited about that. Also excited about attending some of the SAC meetings for my schools. Because I really think we can find out an awful lot when we do that. So we have to be there. We can hear a lot of things. But we need to be there to really see what's going on. So I encourage all of you to do that. With that, Mr. Gibbs, do you have anything?
No.
No? Ms., Dr. Mayor?
Yes ma'am. First of all, happy birthday.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Their birthdays are awesome.
Twenty-nine.
Of course.
Again.
And let me add my thanks for the referendum. It's very much appreciated on behalf of those 43,000 kids. Thank you, thank the committee, and thank the constituency. We cannot thank them enough for voicing their trust in what we're doing here in Marion County Public Schools. It's appreciated. Officer Hunt? It's good to see you again. So we chatted briefly before the meeting. And so we just want to confirm the two kids are doing well? And mom's doing well? Okay. We were chatting about how the kids get in the pantry and pull out the pots and pans and bang on them. And Officer Hunt, I think that's a great thing. So we're going to go back and convince mom to let them do it. Check in with us next time and let us know how that went. We want to recognize that we have two Boy Scouts in the audience. Would you gentlemen please stand? Because we're so glad when you visit us. And I'm going to ask you to pronounce your names for me. Because respectfully, I'm the mom of a boy and you write like a boy. So it's okay. So could you say your names for me? Thank you. Okay, thank you for joining us today. We appreciate that. And if you need anything from us, please let us know. We're big supporters of the Boy Scouts and all you do. Thank you so much. I want to let you all know that Wednesday, tomorrow night, we have another Twitter chat. And this was something very new to me before this school year. And what you do is you log into Twitter. You use the hashtag #WeAreMCPS. It starts at 7:30 tomorrow night. And there are questions that Jenna Dawson will facilitate. I'm going to ask Jenna, she's at a conference, but we'll ask her to retweet this and then we'll pick it up on our Twitter account and tweet it out. But there's questions starting at 7:36. And Jenna will post the questions. They talk about stakeholder relationships, parent engagement, how you can show families you value them. And the questions pop at certain times and that's on the schedule. So she'll pop the question and then everybody that's on the Twitter chat responds and adds the hashtag. And that's how you follow it. It's really very interesting. And if you can't go on at that time, if you go back and just do a search for the hashtag, you can follow the conversation. And I've done that one time before where I came in late but just went through and then replied at that time. So it's a great thing to do. So I encourage you to do that, please. And I'm really excited to share that in one month we will be having the Superintendent's Safe Halloween again. So October 25th, starting at 5:00 PM, it'll be at our District East offices. Last year was the first time we did this. And we had over 700 kids go through. Ms. Dobbins is shaking her head as she helped organize that. We had families lined down Fort King waiting to come up the sidewalk and to visit with our, all of our schools were there, our departments were there. And so we're going to do that again. We've also opened it this year to community agencies like the Health Department and such like that. And they will have tables there to share information with our families. So that's October 25th, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And we will be sending out, we've put this on Peach Jar already, but we'll continue to share that, tweet it, and share it at schools. I have great news to share about Kingdom of the Sun. As you recall, about this time last year, we had our friends from Kingdom of the Sun come and they were in some financial difficulties. And working through, with the community support, we got a generous donation from Mr. Stan Hansen. And he presented at the board. He donated $10,000 to them and told them that he would match their donations that people had given to them, up to $10,000. Well, sitting with Ms. Boston Ellis, going over, she and I meet regularly, going over the financials, we got ahold of Mr. Muncaster because that initial $10,000 is about used up. So we reached out to Mr. Muncaster. He came in and he said, "No problem. We got this all taken care of." So Ms. Morgan, who is the treasurer of Kingdom of the Sun, is meeting with Mr. Hanson. And they are in a good financial place. So those concerts will continue. And we are very excited about that. And we appreciate just the communication with them. I have a lot of people to thank. But I want to start with our lead teachers, our curriculum liaisons. These lead teachers that have been trained through our Teaching and Learning Department are, it's a great way to encourage that leadership for teachers. But there are so many teachers who don't want to leave the classroom but still want leadership opportunities. And this does it for them. So they are our voice, the boots on the ground kind of with the teachers there. Well, in third grade, they had communicated to our elementary curriculum department that they weren't pleased with one of the stories that was in the Reader for third grade coming up. And our third graders this month, they're going to be doing mythology. Incredible, incredible stories. But a particular one about Cupid and Psyche, they didn't believe was developmentally appropriate. They took it to Ms. Beck and her team. Ms. Beck and her team met with me. And in review, I totally agree with that. So we put in last week's Monday memo that we support that decision for teachers to choose an alternate text. And that they could choose one that they believed met the standards that were being taught. Or Ms. Beck and Stacy Newman's had texts chosen for them that they could use. So I'm very excited and very pleased. And I want to say thank you to those lead teachers for having that conversation, for reaching out to Ms. Beck so timely so that we could make those adjustments for them. And Board, I have that for you. And I can make copies of the story and put it in your box if you would like to see it. And I also want to celebrate that coming up, this next month too, that our fifth graders in their poetry journals that they have are going to be reading some incredible poetry. And when I was leafing through, I saw Lawrence Ferenghetti in here. And when I mentioned it to Mr. McEachire, he was like, "Whoa, that's good stuff." And I remember reading Lawrence Ferenghetti when I was in college. And he just touched my heart. And he's got a poem in the Reader. There's Elizabeth Bishop is in here. Langston Hughes is in here. And the vocabulary that the students will be exposed to in the poetry journal, it's inappropriate, but it is at a very high level. So I just want to assure you that our teachers through the curriculum map are being coached and encouraged to go over that vocabulary before it's introduced in the classroom. But we are getting great feedback that the vocabulary and the high expectations of these stories are an asset to our students. And I think that is a great thing. And we can get you a copy of that poetry journal as well, if you'd like. Christine Demongren at Sunrise Elementary has a Pay It Forward Club. And she works that through the 21st Century Grant at Sunrise. And her and her kids after school, they are just working hard to make the world a better place. And some of their projects include sending cards to the senior center. They reach out to veterans. They're doing the rocks, where they put the positive messages on rocks and hide them around. Well, when Ms. Demongren became aware of our Bark Bus partnership, she decided that her kids were going to make blankets for the dogs. So they are going to start making blankets for the dogs at the Humane Society. Yeah, it's like a binky. I said, "Oh my gosh, Ms. Demongren. It's like they're binkies." So they're going to give the blankets to the dogs. And then when the dogs are adopted, they can take the blanket with them to their new home. So we thank Ms. Demongren and all of her kids at Sunrise for making the world a better place. Now, Ms. Trey Hearn, who teaches English at Vanguard, she's known as one of those tough teachers. She's dedicated, hardworking, but she's got that reputation for being tough. And I can relate to that. You know, those tough teachers, they don't get those immediate warm fuzzies that other teachers do. But they carry a lot of weight. Now, Ms. Trey Hearn got this email just a week or so ago from a former student who thanked her for being that tough teacher. And the student had applied for a scholarship. And the student says, "I want you to know, I was granted the $3,000 scholarship because of my concise writing. I owe all of this to you and just want you to know how grateful I am to have had you as a teacher. Have a blessed day." Not only teachers are making impact on our kids, but our bus drivers too. So many of our Marion County Public School family just touch the lives of our kids every day and just don't get the recognition they're deserved. So a bus driver at Festinon Elementary, one of her little guys missed the bus. And this little guy is one who does not adjust to change well. Well, mom brought him to school and he was all out of sorts. And he saw his bus and his bus driver. And he took off. And he went right up to that bus and that bus driver. Well, the bus driver, Mrs. Douglas, and it was Route 20 to 24, welcomed him on the bus, loved on him, talked to him, calmed him down. And even got him on the bus, took the bus out of the complex and rode around and brought him in like he was arriving to school. And he was calmed down. I know, isn't that awesome? And so his day was magical. And we want to thank her. Yes. Mm-hmm. Ms. Knight, who's one of our social workers, she wanted to thank Officer Douglas, who's the SRO at Hillcrest Elementary. Ms. Knight and her other social work assistant companion, they had to do a home visit. And it turned out that this home visit at the home was a person who had an arrest warrant out for them. And Officer Douglas was able to get ahold of them, to skirt them in another direction. And so they were never put in any danger. And he went out of his way to really get that communication moving. And so thank you to Mr. Lopez, who facilitated that communication. And at our district level, our district program specialist for teaching and learning, Logan Johnson and Jennifer Thomas, they held a session one evening for teachers. And one of the teachers sent an email to them and who wanted, she said, "I want to express my appreciation for last night's session." And this email is representative of many that we are getting from our teachers. And so on behalf of this teacher, I want to thank you. She said, "I walked into the training with a huge chip on my shoulder. There have been a lot of changes in this district. And I thought this was going to be yet another case of outsiders being brought in to show us how to do things. I could not have been more wrong in this case. The chip is gone, thanks to both of you." And the PDCP program, that's where we, that teacher leader program I mentioned at the beginning, this program alone is a wonderful idea. You guys are a winner. She said that this training helped me see that while my previous Clin Ed educator training and experience as a National Board Certified Mentor would have been adequate to help this new teacher, it would nonetheless have been incomplete. Again, this is one of a couple of changes I feel have been outstanding ones under the new leadership. The enthusiasm and obvious pleasure that every member of your department who was there last night showed was encouraging. Please keep up the good work. Back to Festinon, we want to give a shout out to media specialist Maggie Aguero. This year alone, the children at Festinon have checked out 1,237 books just up to this point. And last year, in all, they only checked out 529. So yes, so she is making reading magical out there. And we thank them. Ms. Savage, who is the guidance counselor at Donellen Elementary, was recognized for her attention in a 504 meeting. And that her amazing knowledge, demeanor, organizational skills, and professionalism added to the assistance that they were able to give these students. So we want to thank her. Mrs. Hi, a fourth grade teacher at 8th Street Elementary, received a note of thanks from a parent who said that for the first time, not only does her daughter love math, but her daughter gets it and calls herself a mathematician. At East Marion, last week, the receptionist, Kim Lane, checked in a visitor, ran his license through the Raptor system, and received a notification that this visitor was, had a warrant out for his arrest. So she immediately got ahold of Secretary Judy Laramore. And with the assistance of the SRO out there, that visitor was detained in the front office. And this was after school hours. Never made it past that front office. So we want to thank the entire team out at East Marion. And under the leadership of Suzette Parker, their principal, where she has created that family feeling where everybody just steps up and takes care of everybody. Principal Lapira at Saddlewood gave thanks to Ms. Mallory Strong. She received an email from a parent who said that Mrs. Strong is such an asset as the daughter is going through some transition because mom's going through a divorce. And that Ms. Strong sends me pictures and messages on how my child is doing. And I've never seen a teacher take so much pride in their students. Principal Smallridge at Donellen Middle got an email from a parent who thanked him because the child is doing so well in high school and attributes it to all of the work that the teachers at Donellen Middle gave. And so thank you to Principal Smallridge and the team out there. And Kathy Berry in our Title II office